But right now, we need to kind of get ourselves organized.
We have five minutes. If Councilor Barbas needs to leave by six o'clock, we'll let him go. Seven o'clock political with seven, two, seven thirty actually.
Okay.
So see that, Councilor Pivoy?
Ah, I got it.
Okay.
All right. Councilor Edmonds, maybe if you don't mind giving us a word of area, kind of a call or meeting to order.
Alberta, we're thankful the opportunity we have to meet tonight, thankful for the service that we can provide for the town. We're thankful all those provided for us, and we also will guide and direct as we discuss many things in this way. Let's come to nail our lives on Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen, Councilor. Well, today is the ninth of February. It's our regular council, town council meeting. We're going to call the meeting to order and welcome the media team for Temple City Star and for my council for town thirty-two. So we have an agenda. There are two additions that have been requested. Under nine B, you would have the shut-off call, and under nine C, a fire EMS, a report by Councilor Barnes. Those are the only two additions I have.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Thank you. Any other discussions, questions? Seeing none. All in favor? Thank you. No delegation today, so we have the minutes of the regular meeting of council of January twelfth, two thousand sixteen, that we need to approve.
I'm going to approve the minutes for January twenty-sixth, two thousand sixteen.
Okay. Any questions, corrections that need to be made? I'd still see any. Okay, all in favor? Thank you. We had the public hearing of January twelfth, two thousand sixteen. We have minutes that need to be approved. Councilor Pivoy?
Ah, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, just before we make a motion to approve, and I just had a little discussion on that, because as I looked at the minutes, I think they're lacking in some substance there. All it said is that the council made grammatical changes. And we actually made some substantial changes that resulted in some of the amendments, you know, as far as definitions and as far as trees and things like that. And so I don't know how we correct those before we approve them, but I feel like that they were lacking.
It's a land use bylaw.
But that was a draft only though.
Yeah, I, yeah, we did make some.
Okay, hold on a second. So you are trying to say that the public hearing minutes do not exactly reflect the work that we did as council to address some of the changes that were going to be made in that document?
Correct.
So that's one question.
Yeah, my recollection of that, Councilor Creed, is that those changes were made in the actual meeting, not in the public hearing. So in the hearing, Mr. Dick Rome went over his, you know, recommendations, and then we just pointed out a couple of grammatical errors. And then later, when we were in the real meeting, we added those items to, you know, so those would have been in the other minutes.
In fact, that was, that is quite correct, because if you remember, I started to want to correct something, and then they say, well, let's do all that at the end, and then bring it up in the meeting after the meeting. So I think the essence of the minute is correct. So any other further discussion?
That's a good point. You know, I'm just looking back and sure it's probably.
My only concern there would be is that it might be more accurate to show that those things were discussed, because they were discussed in the public hearing. We didn't make any amendments to it during the public hearing.
I will turn to administration and try to figure out a little bit, because with the MGA's written, it's really, the obligation we have is to see the motions, the motion addressed with sufficient information in the motion to be able to address the different points that would move the business forward. So how exactly do you want to do it, Jeff? I'm just curious to know, because that's, that's a little bit of a point of governance and lots of.
Do we have to have a motion to approve those changes, or do we do that before the third reading?
Well, we did it in the second one, yeah.
We already done that.
Okay, yeah, so then we're all right there.
So my question isn't so much on the governance side, because the governance, I think, is quite clear that anything that we did there has to be done during the council meeting. My question is just from a transparency perspective, if somebody's looking at the public hearing minutes, it looks like all we talked about was some grammatical changes, and that's not what we talked about.
Okay, all right, so.
So I'm just looking at it from a transparency.
Okay, would it be possible then to amend those minutes to say that different points addressed in the land use bylaw that needed changes were discussed and are now addressed in the land use bylaw? To be addressed in the land use bylaw. Would that make sense?
And dealt with in council.
Yeah, I don't see, I was going back to the council minutes, and I don't see.
It does not bring that forward either. Okay.
No.
All right, so how should we address that a little bit of transparency issue? Maybe what we could do as council is ask administration to maybe put a one liner there that some items were discussed for changes in the land use bylaw to be addressed in the final draft of the land use bylaw. Would that make sense?
Or before next reading.
Right, yeah.
We had second reading now?
We've done, we did second reading in that meeting, and then there was some actual discussion that came forth, which will bring us to tonight when we discuss the land use bylaw. And there's some additional amendments that resulted from the discussion at the public hearing and at that last meeting. So that's what we're talking about.
Right, yes, those amendments haven't been passed yet. They would be what we deal with today.
Why don't we put something then to the effect that council suggested amendment to the land use bylaw in the different sections prior to the third reading, to be dealt with prior to the third reading? Would that work?
So why don't you just not pass the public hearing minutes tonight? Okay, and then we'll bring it back.
Yeah, I think maybe that's the best way to handle it. Okay, thank you, Councilor, and you're right, transparency is something we want to create, so no doubt, let's fix it. All right, let's go on to six.
Hold on a second, just before we go on, just a point. We had, we had a public open house. We were very transparent. They had all the opportunity.
No, we're not understanding. This is about if somebody pulls up the minutes ten years from now, they read those. Doesn't say what we're talking about. But that's the transparency.
It's just a draft.
It's the transparency of the work of council as reported in the minute.
Right, that's what I'm getting at. So if a citizen wanted to know what we were talking about in council, those minutes don't.
I guess you have to refer to YouTube channel thirty-two. It's right there.
Yeah, but I have a rather YouTube channel.
Eliminate the whole purpose of minutes.
Well, you could be surprised if you look at the Land Use bylaws. The Land Use bylaws' agenda, and then they have the web, you can press and see the video clip.
You could refer to that as well.
It's interactive.
Yeah, it's interactive. Okay, we don't have that type of button. All right, under six, bylaw and policy, let's do six A. Here we need a motion to approve the amendments that we are referring to. So Councilor Creed.
Can we make that approval until we have the minutes?
No. You move to approve the changes.
It's a separate document altogether.
And the document, you know, the changes, you should have them on the document.
Yeah.
So, yeah, we need a motion to.
To approve the amendments.
Yeah, I will make the motion that we approve the amendments to the, yeah, Land Use bylaw sixteen forty-seven.
I don't think we only have that.
There was some additional amendments that are highlighted.
All the red parts in there.
So I really appreciated all the changes that were made.
Or maybe the red.
And, Councilor Creed, since you had brought quite a few of those changes forward, are you satisfied with the way that the changes have been made?
Yeah, I think so. Some of them were just including definitions, and some of the, we talked about as far as, you know, landscaping.
The beautification, landscaping, the size, the area that should be done.
The one question I asked him about, he didn't change, but that's, it's not a problem, it's just.
Okay, all right.
One thought along those lines is.
Councilor Pivoy?
Yeah, in the landscaping point two that we amended, we removed the minimum of ten percent, because for some laws that would be huge.
It was too much.
And instead, we just kind of left it up to the development authority. I'm just wondering, is that too vague now? I mean, what if the development authority becomes, you know?
You know something? You are a group of eight, nine. How many are you?
Five on a good day.
Okay, all right. Well, five on a good day should be five heads that should be independent of each other to be able to make a decision.
Fair enough.
So I would say, if there is collusion, we have a poor.
We always amend it later, it becomes a poor concern.
Yeah, we don't want collusion ever. All right, so all in favor? Thank you. It's now passed. Six B, police. Yeah, but now you need to have the third reading. Do you want us to allow?
Do you want to?
I don't think so.
Okay.
Are you ready to read the one? I don't see anything. Yeah, there's something we're waiting for.
Councilor Bantry, you concerned because the public hearing minutes have not been approved.
Exactly.
But the public minutes only reflect the fact that we had a group of people that were there to hear, for us to hear their concerns, and if you remember, they had none. We asked them. So the only one who had concerns were ourselves. We brought those concerns. This is what we want to be reflected in those minutes, but in fact, all the changes have been made, and we just took a motion to that effect, to approve those changes. So there we, by approving them, are saying we are satisfied that the changes may reflect what we asked to be changed. So therefore, that land use bylaw now could go through third reading.
The only thing I would throw out to you, Council, is if there was a reason not to do it, and it's not a big deal, is they still haven't done a lot of the grammatical corrections. So when I talked to Oris Karhad Nolan, they said, well, once all the amendments are done, and we know that it's a done deal, then we'll have it carefully proofread. So their intention is, once all the changes are done, we'll do that. And I get that, I can appreciate that. I'm trying to reconcile in my head approving a bylaw that we shouldn't be approving what's in front of us. You should be approving what's in front of you. So I'm trying to reconcile that none of the intent of the bylaw would change, I would agree with that. Nobody would be changing the intent of what it said, but it's riddled with spelling and grammatical errors right now.
Yes, there is.
Do you want a finished product prior to approving?
I think the MGA requests that we don't approve of something until it is finished and ready for approval.
Well, the only, the only argument too would be that the intent wouldn't change from here on in. So the intent of the bylaw is fixed.
Yeah, it depends on the grammatical changes that could change, you know, part of that bylaw.
It could be something ambiguous.
All right, so I see we don't have a hundred percent approval here. I would go along with suggestion of administration to say, we may be wiser to have the final product in our hands, have read it ourselves, be sure that it is exactly what we want, and then approve the final reading. I think maybe let's go this wise route.
Thank you.
I wouldn't feel offended by that at all. I think it's a wise route.
No.
Okay, so let's keep third reading, and let's maybe let administration know that that could let us know that we would prefer a final proper product.
Does administration need a motion to prove that direction?
We probably need to do it.
Well, we're waiting for Oris.
Yeah, but.
Because of the conversations a couple of weeks ago, I'm just wondering if that's a better process.
Make a motion to direct administration to refer to Oris for final product.
Before you make that motion, I have a question. Who makes the changes under grammar?
It is Oris.
Okay, that's a right, I was hoping to say that, because I think it's their responsibility.
They bring in a proofreader, actually. Someone comes in and proves it very carefully.
That's not involved in.
Yeah, and it's all part of what we pay them for.
Yeah, so it should be there before we.
Well, we should have an excellent product, never mind.
So I'll move to direct administration to get a final draft from Oris for us to.
A final edited and proofread.
Yeah, if you want to add all of that to the final proofreaded edited draft for us to be able to.
Yeah, because they give us a final draft, but it's not at par. Okay, all in favor? Thank you very much. Good.
Full color. Hi, colleague.
Well, you know, if we decide we want to go with excellence as one of our values, then we can require the same from others.
Then we'll scan it, put it on your drive.
All right, seven, other business. Seven A, planning session. Oh, six B, sorry. Policy Act S forty-five, snow removal policy that just came back from the CCW. And so we just need, unless you have more to discuss, but I think we've done a pretty good job discussing, so we really need a motion to approve.
Alberta, we accept the updated snow removal policy S forty-five dash one.
Thank you, yeah, forgot the dash one. All in favor? Thank you. All right, so I would imagine that new version would be posted on our website with the changes.
Yeah, we'll get everything updated, yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Under seven, other business, seven A, two thousand sixteen planning session assignment. Now, if you saw in your packet, there is a list of different steps or projects or tasks that have been listed, and what would be appropriate would be a motion to approve the list in order for administration to move forward with that.
Yeah, and just for clarity, in those hundred four, we're amending the strategic plan, updating it with these new points, and then I'm guessing, they're not here, but you're gonna, if I may ask administration, you're gonna add, you know, some estimate deadlines for each item that would then show up on your monthly report?
Correct, so I'll plug everything into those short, medium, long-term action items, and then I'll bring everything back when that's done. So you have a copy of that. And I try and bring out every couple of months, I think, with an update, so.
Yeah, for sure. Awesome. That's what I was.
So would you like to make?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to direct administration to put into plan all the planning session action items, including those that get scheduled into the strategic plan for twenty sixteen, for twenty sixteen, seventeen, twenty sixteen, seventeen.
Does that make sense? Are we okay with that, Jeff? Kind of? Kind of, one more time?
I can, hold on. To direct administration, I make a motion to direct administration to carry out a plan of action for all the things discussed in the council planning session for the years twenty sixteen.
To carry forward tasks emerged from the planning session assignment.
Perfect.
That's what he said.
Yeah, to carry those forward.
All right, all in favor? Thank you. Okay, seven B is an interesting request. It's a damage reimbursement request. We have a citizen in town that hit a pothole and brought a repair bill to the town for a dashed with car. The amount is not a large amount. It's not a question of the amount. What is more important to discuss at this table is the principle of the obligation and responsibility of municipalities regarding this type of issue. So essentially, if you read the MGA, the MGA is precise and vague at its best. So it's precise in some point, it's vague in other point. But what is certain, that there is a point that is made in MGA, that the town can never be found liable for having done their utmost to correct issues. In this very particular case, the pothole had never been reported to the town. Therefore, the town did not know. When the town had been aware of the pothole, instantly that very hour, the public works went and filled provisally, but filled that hole. Meaning that we do take those things seriously. It is a very difficult point to think that every time there is something happening, the town is liable, because during the winter, roads are going to be damaged, we know that. And sometime in the winter, you cannot fix the roads to the level that you can fix them in the spring. So if we were going in a court of law, what would a lawyer possibly say is, have you done all possible? Do you always leave your road full of potholes? No, we don't. Do you do your utmost to keep the roads in, have we decent repair not to have injuries? Yes, we do. So when we start to look at all that, I am not sure that the town can be liable for damages. But if the town had been negligent, that pothole was reported, the town doesn't do anything, another person has mishaps with the same pothole, I would say a court will hold us liable, because now it's negligence. But in this case, I don't see the negligence. Therefore, I find it difficult to assume their liability for it.
I agree a hundred percent, Mayor. I think that in the event of negligence, you know, we'd be responsible, I would have no problem. But, you know, what I just want to maybe confirm with administration is, if you could address this for, if you know, do we have a plan in place to check for potholes, or is our plan just that we wait until reports come in, which that's a plan? And then second, if we do have a plan, have we been doing it? Have we, or have we neglected the plan, in which case then there would be negligence? Do you mind speaking to that?
So we don't do a systematic drive up and down roads like we do annually with sidewalks. So sidewalks, we actually systematically walk them all, mark where there's areas we need to work on and put them in budget. The same isn't said for roads. So normally, they will notice them, obviously, when the guys are out and about. So if they notice them and then, if we get a complaint, we log it on the system and tell the guys where it's at. So there isn't a systematic, monthly inspection of all the roadways. No, there's not.
But as they get reported, they get logged, and then they get addressed. And we did that in this case.
Correct.
I'm satisfied here.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, if you don't mind, stay right.
I'm just wondering if we have any policies that deal with, you know, this type of situation? Anything written, or is this how we handled this in the past?
Yeah, we don't have anything in policy. I would imagine historically, they relied on the act to a large degree. But no, there isn't a hard policy on, this is the town's stance on this issue.
I'm glad we're not in Belgium. Because in Belgium, I'm Calgary or Edmonton. Because I'm sure that many cow will get pretty badly damaged.
Just thinking about our weather that we have, and the different type of climate that we have, Cartson is a very unique place compared to other places in southern Alberta. And we have frosty, we have the, you know, it would be cold as a blazes, and then a couple of days later, we've got a schnuck fly in at sixteen, you know, degrees, and then all of a sudden, you get a frosty that's coming. And you're definitely going to get potholes from that. And we, I don't think we can be held responsible for that. We do the best that we can to get out there and check them out. You know, Councilor Bantry and I took a drive here a couple of, three weeks ago. We drove up and down a whole pile of streets and noticed on the high school hill, for instance, now we're going to have some trouble on that hill if that doesn't get taken care of right away. Because not only is the surface breaking up, it's starting to sink. And that's going to be a real problem, so, you know, while we've got nice weather, maybe that should be looked at by the crews. But, you know, we've driven up and down the new road, the new surface road, the west bypass. That road is holding up really, really well compared to what it was a year ago before they did that. And I'm amazed that we didn't have, you know, a little more heaving in it, but it's really quite nice to drive there. So I also feel that, you know, I've had a ton of potholes myself.
All right, so Council, if I understand, we are not going to action anything except request that administration sends a letter to this citizen, which should be the fair response.
Yeah, and I think the letter should reflect that council found that administration was adhering to our policies, that there was no negligence found, that kind of thing.
According to the MGA. Okay, all right, so that's your motion, Councilor?
I'll happily make that motion.
Thank you. So all in favor? Thank you. It's unfortunate. I mean, I hate to see citizens having to fork out money, but we have to, to make sure that things are fairly secure too. Okay, seven C. That is the Alberta Southwest ACP grant support. And what we need to do is do a proper, is that a motion you need there? Yes, you need a motion for that. So Alberta Southwest.
I'd be happy to make that motion. I've made a lot, though, if someone else wants to.
Come on, Councilor Barbas.
I'll move that we.
Actually, Councilor Barbas, can you read?
Do you want me to read it specifically?
Yeah, it has to be read the way it is written.
Being resolved that council authorizes the town of Cartson to participate in application for the Alberta Southwest Dados project submitted by the town of Pincher Creek under the intermunicipal collaboration component of the Alberta Community Partnership, ACP, and further that the town of Cartson participant agrees to abide by the terms of the conditional grant agreement governing the purpose and use of the grant funds.
Okay, that's mouthful.
Well done.
All in favor? Thank you. Okay, let's go to seventy. If you remember in the last meeting, we said that it could be an interesting conference to go to as an economic development conference for Alberta, and there is some interesting topic. I'm wondering, Councilor Barbas, that is your domain, so are you interested in going there?
Very much so. When I went through this agenda, there's some really interesting.
Okay, so could you represent the town at that point, and then make sure that your report kind of.
Happy to do it.
Reflects what you're doing. Yes.
Question, Mayor.
Go ahead.
I've had a discussion with one other council. When we, when we request a councilor to go to a seminar such as this, is it deducted from his expenditures, or should this be from general town funds?
At this point, probably if it is something that we all decide, I would say general funding is probably. I mean, general funding meaning council funding should be possibly that. We need to work on that, councilors. We need to determine the policy around that. We really don't have one yet. So sometimes we have taken money from all per year if you have not used it to take a course. a course. So since it's there for you, it is a way to get knowledge, so could you call it a seminar? We have to discuss that. It's not clear. But at this point, let's take it from the general fund. I don't even know what you have left in your account.
I haven't used much for this year, so.
Okay, well, maybe, maybe you have to decide with administration if it would be okay to take a portion from there. Last time, I think if we did it for you, Councilor Barnes, I think we took a chunk from there and a chunk from...
Took it all.
Was it?
You take a chunk.
Okay.
That was my concern, because I was, I was asked by council to represent council at the FCM, and Jeff and I have had the discussion, and I was just waiting for the answer to that, because I didn't think it should have been.
Okay.
No, she probably just kind of...
Okay.
If I can, just to speak to that, and then I think, my understanding has been that, you know, our personal development finance, you know, money set aside for personal, yeah, education, is, is kind of maybe personal interest, things that make us better leaders, municipal directors, et cetera, but things that are relevant to, you know, things that we're working on, committees, and things that we discuss on these tables, I think that, that would come out of the regular funds.
But here is the issue, if you don't use it to take a course, for example, essentially it's used for development of a councillor's work, okay? So, AUMA education thing. If you don't take it, and at the end of the full year, you have $1,500 left, which you never used, where do you think those funds are going? In general revenues?
I think that's where they should go to.
So, they're going to go back in general revenues?
Yeah.
So that you use that money before the end of your term to cover something that is a seminar or something where you get information and knowledge, is half a dozen this or half a dozen that? But I understand the principle. I understand the principle, and maybe we need to clarify that.
As an example of that, obviously, economic development's a personal interest of mine as well as being on that committee, I've taken a course that was specifically, that leads towards a designation in economic development, that to me, that would be what that coursework is for. But attending a conference that councils asked you to attend, probably isn't what that was originally said.
Right.
Yeah, that's kind of the right...
So, in other words, maybe, Councilor, if there is a course you're going to take or intend to take before the end of your term, then administration...
That was really my only concern, is I, I looked at what I had left, 300 bucks, and I'm thinking, oh, America, I can't even take any education courses that I would like to take.
Okay, well, if you have one you want to take, let me know.
That's, that's, that's fine enough for me.
So, I think there is fairness in that whole thing, but eventually, that money reverts back to general funding, one way or the other.
Mayor, I'd make a suggestion that we use part of one, maybe a CCW or something like that, to develop a policy with our administration.
That will come, and that is something that is part of the to-do. Jeff, if I remember right, then obviously regarding funding.
And I think it also comes out of our review. Did not our, Mr. Cuff, want that council, council pay in full-fledged remuneration, absolutely.
Yeah. But maybe as part of the remuneration and part of this amount of money, maybe we need to review all that.
I just want to ask administration, where is this conference at? I didn't see it.
It is in...
Canaanasus.
Canaanasus, yeah. Not a bad place to be, at this point of that.
No golf up there.
All right.
Not even snowgolf?
Counselor...
I think we should have a, have a motion to authorize Councilor Balfour to attend this.
Yes, we need to have that.
I will make that motion, that we authorize Councilor Balfour to attend this EDA conference to represent town council and report back.
Okay, but maybe then you need to put the funding coming from where?
And, and funding from, I don't remember the account name right now.
Council, council funding.
Council funding, council administration funding.
We'll tweak it with the account number.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Okay, and we will deal with the other issue, and I'm glad you bring that up, because all that is very muddy, yeah?
Yeah, there was one, just one other thing, see, there's a disaster conference coming up, which you and I are on that committee, and that's something that really tweaked me, that I was very anxious, because we need to, that's coming up in April or March, I got some information on it.
Okay. All right. And that is, let's talk about the issue of funding and other...
Yeah, that's fine.
Well, if I may, we will be addressing it when we look at the financial statements, because we have got the full year budget from last year, and this particular category, we were $9,000 under for last year, so under budget.
Okay.
That's a good place to be.
So, 7E.
We're going forward to send in.
7E, Letter to Carstens County. So that is a letter that requested to be a thank you, and thank you, administration, for doing that for us.
Does that need a motion?
So you need a motion to...
Yeah, I'll make that motion, it'll be a proven letter to the county.
Thank you.
For their support.
And I will sign that letter afterwards. All in favor? Thank you. 7A, Financial Report. If you see what is written at the end of the line, December 2015, it's not for your approval, the reason is that we're going to have an audit, and that December 2015 reflects the whole year of the budget, and therefore, after the budget will be audited, we will then approve all this. We have, I don't remember his name.
I do have his name, too.
Anyway, it's not the same firm as what we had last year. It is a smaller operator, it's not a large firm, but is someone who is quite cognizant of municipal budgeting and dealing.
I just want to mention one thing, I wanted that in the background, so that near the end, so we're still close to December, you can kind of look at budgets to actuals, but I say, I present that with a large caveat. There's still dozens of journal entries to occur. So for example, if you were to look in, and I believe when I went through it, if you're looking at water or wastewater wages, they're over budget. But a portion of that is going to get attributed to capital costs, capital projects that were done. So it's going to start bringing that in line.
And then there is this $70,000 engineering fees that are for the quick remediation.
Right, right, so they'll, they'll get tweaked with the funding on the revenue side, so there's still a number of journal entries that haven't happened yet, but it's as close a reflection of budget actuals I can give you, as close as I can to the end of the year.
I appreciate the side notes that are on the budget, allowing you to really understand the variation, and if you have questions regarding those variations, by all means, report.
Yeah, I just have one for administration. The, the one that stood out for me, because if I recall, we approved a little extra funding to what I would have considered bylaw enforcement last year, and then noticed that this year, we came in quite a bit under budget. So I don't know, is that, did we have less wages than anticipated, or?
I'll find out. Sorry, I'll find out for you, councillor.
Okay, I'm just...
I'm not sure, I'm not sure.
Okay.
What that one has. I noticed that one was under two, I highlighted a bunch yesterday, so I could have the clerks kind of give me the anomalies in them.
It's always good to see things under budget, but that was one I was expecting to be over budget.
But if we budgeted something to be spent.
Right, right. Agreed.
Yeah. Councilor Barnes?
It's just a little humor here, under the grave openings. They're lower than normal this year. Does that mean they're not digging them deep? Maybe you're digging deep. We're trying to save money.
Okay, Councilor, thank you for your black humor. Good grief.
I couldn't resist, I'm sorry, it was there.
I know you couldn't resist. I noticed.
Think about the papers you want, Kim.
Okay. Normally direct in the paper.
Bad enough, it's all good, you have to tell me.
Okay.
He's got a grave set of humor.
All right. Let's go, councillor, we're doing great.
Please.
We're doing really good. If we move forward, we might be...
I'll happily move to accept the financial assessment.
You don't want to...
I withdraw my...
It's for your, thank you. It's just for your perusal. Okay, let's go to item nine, Committee and Others' Report. So under the, 9A, you have the January 2016 bylaw report. Do you have any question regarding the figures presented there? You can see we're still dealing with cantons dogs regardless of the season, makes no difference. Okay.
Those dogs.
Well, that's good. 9B, we, I have on the front of us, something that councillor Balfour would like to talk about, which I should talk about.
Mayor and council, this in front of you are some things were handed out at the Chautauqua meeting last Wednesday night. Councillor Pivoy and his wife, Kim, and along with Cheryl Davidson, came to that meeting, it was three hours of extremely information, extreme information. I want to give you all a copy of these old programs of Chautauquas and what's happening. Our date, our date is, is August 13th, is our date for the Chautauqua. It's a one-day thing, and it's the same day as our heritage parade. So it's going to be a big full day, we'll have a lot of people in town.
Is it, it's here in town, right?
Yes.
Okay. August 13, you said?
Yes.
And whereabouts are you holding it, all over the town, right?
Yeah, there'll be different venues, depending on, I've got a strike committee, we've got a strike committee, and there's going to be a lot of work, and we tossed around a whole lot of ideas. Darlis Coolidge put on the presentation, and she is absolutely excellent.
Yeah, she's very good.
And I want, I want councillor Pivoy, as well as Kim Denno and Cheryl publicly, that I really appreciate them attending the meeting.
Right. I had a citizen that was interested, you probably got a phone call?
I did.
So that was some interesting ideas that came forward over the years.
Very good idea.
Thank you. All right, so that's very good, thank you, councillor, for this information. Anything else we need to do to help you?
Any of the councillors that have people in the background that will want to look at this, please tell them what a Chautauqua is, please tell them how to get involved. We're looking at all different kinds of events.
Is there something we can do for advertising, starting early?
Shim, can you report on the two magazines that have contacted you? It's Alberta Report or Alberta Tourism, and Badlands, what was it?
One, for sure, Alberta Southwest, okay, travel magazine, formerly Shunacountry.com. They contacted us, we have a piece that we publish in their magazine every year, and we added Chautauqua to this year, so people who are traveling southern Alberta and have access to this magazine will be able to see it as one of our events.
Right. And I know we also will have the other event, which is the power, but the date we have, except we don't know the whole format yet.
It'd be great to have it almost...
It's going to be one month earlier.
I know, I know.
But that's okay. All right, under...
Just a quick question on Chautauqua there.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
You're fine. Is, is, maybe this is a question for administration, is there someone on, you know, in the administration that's, that's our go-to person in the office that works with councillor Bangery and this, and this committee?
Not right now, no, it's been me.
It's been you?
Yeah.
Because, you know, and that's, that's awesome, but I know you're busy, and so I'm thinking...
Well, if we get the AC Dev position figured here in the next 60 days?
Right.
Then that person will be...
And that will be full-time, dedicated to. Because, yeah, I think it does need attention, and, you know, the committee can use some guidance of a professional nature, although councillor Bangery is doing a great job, but the individuals sometimes that are, that are volunteering, their level of commitment, or, you know, health problems or whatever, it's been a little hit and miss, so.
Okay.
But that one source was excellent, Mayor.
Yeah, well, I think, I thought it would be.
He did contact me, and I thought, a real big idea for that.
Yeah, because I think that would bring you a lot of interest.
There was just one thing, with, that may, may or may not, that I think would go along with the Chautauqua, but I think, I think it's Don Godfrey is working on a history of Carstens.
Yes, he is.
Does anyone know what the...
Jeff would know.
What the progress of that work is at?
I can actually read you an email he sent me about three hours ago.
Oh, perfect.
It was a pretty short and sweet, I haven't heard from, from Dr. Godfrey in quite a while, but he, he did just email me this afternoon. He says, he was asking me about dates, about when things were this summer, when Heritage Week was. He said, "The writing has started with the easy topics, and I'm currently working with all the interviews we conducted last year transcribed, more coming later, I'll talk to you this summer, so."
Okay, so that is...
I've got it partially written now, anyway.
That is possibly another source that could do something dramatic, you know, theater kind of presentation.
Or education or something.
Drama, stories.
Would it, would it be inappropriate for us to maybe invite him? Get his email address and, and maybe let him know some Chautauqua information?
Send it to you.
Yeah, forward that to myself and councillor Bangery, I can contact him.
Yes, his father.
Oh, is he not?
Yeah.
Okay.
But also, one last thing on that, because we, from what, from our meeting that we just had the other day, it looks like we really need to get going in a big way on that. So I'm wondering if we, as a town, couldn't sponsor perhaps a lunch, which would be an information center for some preliminary volunteers, and really help get that ball moving in a big way? Because we have three other communities who are, you know, they're, yeah, they're lying on us to do our part.
All right, help me understand, make it a little bit clear for me. What are we looking at?
I would, this is me personally, I would propose that we, we sponsor a lunch for up to, you know, I would guess 20 volunteers to get information on the Chautauqua, and then start making big, it would almost be like a big brainstorm planning session, and then assign, assign subcommittees.
I think, I think that's doable.
What's her name, some?
Darlis?
Darlis, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if she's...
She comes with a fee.
Darlis, Darlis comes with a fee, but she's with the Mormon Trail, and I don't know if, if the Mormon Trail would allow us to use her individually as a community, that's the only thing.
Right.
I think, for who went, Cheryl and myself...
I personally don't think so.
We could probably facilitate a pretty good little...
So, Jeff, do you want us to have a motion regarding this? To have a volunteer information planning session?
I'll make that motion.
Luncheon? Would you do that elsewhere?
We have a...
That administration, direct administration to establish a luncheon?
Right.
For volunteer and planning session for the Chautauqua of 2016 in Carstens.
Thank you.
There's been a lot of your motion, you know?
I did not make the motion.
Okay, what did my mother?
And then if everyone who does knows someone that, that should be there, let's get them invited to that lunch, for sure.
Like the, like the Rotary Club, Lions Club, Chamber of Commerce.
Absolutely. Okay, so councillor Bangery, councillor Pivoy, maybe start to make a list, if we can add to that list, fine, but give it to administration, please.
Got it.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you.
What kind of list do you want?
Yes, you need to have a list with who you have already, and then if other names can be added to, come to your 20. All right? So, 9C, councillor Barnes, you asked to put this item regarding fire EMS, so can you help me?
Yeah. At the meeting that we just had on, it was the 4th of, 4th of February, we had lots of discussion, and I'll give a report for, for the next, I'll be sending you the report, but there's just a couple of things that they asked me if I would bring to council tonight.
Okay.
And it's, it's some money. One of the things was that, as they've been doing some, some research, they found that there's one little small 20-pound fire extinguisher out of the airport, and it's, it's very, very inadequate. And we need to get a proper fire extinguisher, and Danny's been... And Danny's been, Danny Allen, the chief, our chief's been looking and looking at, he has found a real, a good deal. He's found a 150-pound extinguisher for $650 and there are thousands of dollars to buy them under normal circumstances. I don't know if Danny's talked to you about that yet. And he would like to get the council approval. And I'm not sure, I can't remember if he asked that the council, if we, if the town shares, cost shares with the county? Did he mention that to you?
It will have to be cost sharing.
Yeah, so it's $650 to, to do that. He said that this is a common tank for most airports. And so we'd like, I'd like to, to consider doing that. And then there was a couple of other things.
Okay, can I just ask you something? If we do a cost sharing, so we looking at about $300 for the town?
We're looking at 325 plus GST. It's $650.
Okay.
Half of that is 325.
Okay, all right. 325.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, and I guess that should be a separate motion, that one particular item. There's one other thing I wanted to discuss.
Okay, anybody wants to?
Question? Question on that. You'd mentioned the 20-pound.
That's all it got out there.
But you're saying that this is 150 pounds, which is not a portable fire extinguisher because.
Yes, it is. It's on wheels.
Oh, it's on wheels? I was just going to say, I couldn't lift that 150 pounds.
Yeah, it's easy to move around.
So it's a tank on a wagon, basically.
It's a tank on a wagon, yeah.
And it's, so that's what they consider would be needed.
It's something that most airports have and it'd be a, a good thing to have for like smaller airports. I mean, Leonard's here, you may want to even ask Kim about that.
Question?
Go ahead.
Is there training that's going to go along with this?
What kind of extinguisher is that? Is that a powder? Is that a liquid?
Leonard, what it is? Okay, I'm not sure. All I know is it's a, it's a 150-pound extinguisher. Danny's looked at it and he said that it's very adequate for our airport.
Essentially, the problem is fuel.
Yeah.
It's fuel burning, so that's essentially what we need to extinguish.
I would imagine Danny would do some training.
I want to ask, I'd like to ask administration a question. If a motion is made, should the $325 comes out of general revenue? I don't know where else to take it from.
Well, we, we'd put it under our airport expenses, just because then it's allocated where it's appropriately to be and we'd adjust the expense before we set mill rate.
Okay, so.
That's how I'd deal with it at this stage of the game.
Okay, all right. So, did you hear that somebody needs to make a motion to approve it with the funding coming from airport, airport expenses?
Yeah, I'd make that motion that we approved an expenditure of $325 towards, plus GST towards our share purchasing the 150-pound fire extinguisher for the airport with the money coming from airport expenses.
If I could make a friendly amendment.
Friendly amendment, go ahead.
And also request, request that the county contribute.
I would, I would be glad to, I was thinking about that.
You cannot direct a county to.
They're going to, because they ask, we can request.
You can't, you can't do that in a motion. What you can say, you can say that you will pay half of the $650 extinguisher representing all share.
Shim, do you want to read back what I said?
It has to be tweaked a little bit.
The Council of Assembly Council approved the purchase of 150-pound fire extinguisher for the airport, funding coming from airport. Approved the $325 plus GST for the purchase of American.
Okay, so we'll add on that that the $325 plus GST would be our share of the cost contributed towards purchase. Okay? We good with that?
Yeah, you can put in brackets $650 or something plus GST. All in favor? Thank you.
Okay, one other item. It has to deal with paying for fire bills that aren't insured within the towns. We obviously have a, we've got a house up here, the insurance has decided that they're not responsible for any of it. And the bill on that is going to be $6,800 for fighting that fire.
Which one are we talking about? The recent one?
Upon, on First Street.
On East, no.
First Street West.
Here, west.
Yeah.
Oh, that house that is boarded up.
Yeah, that's the one. So the insurance company has made their ruling and they're not going to pay anything.
Because?
Because apparently he was supposed to be living in it and he wasn't. It was a rental property. Pardon me?
Unoccupied.
Unoccupied, yeah. It wasn't anybody in it at the time.
Void your insurance.
Anyway, so we need to figure out what's, they asked me specific, what's the town's position on who pays the bill for this type of firefighting when there's.
Okay, I do not think that the town has the answer right away unless if you do, would like to hear.
I don't have your answer. You have options.
Yeah, it's taxed.
You can apply the fine, apply the charge to the property and eventually roll it into taxes, so it's mandatory to be paid. So that's certainly an option. When I talked to Danny, he suggested that the insurance company told him to send the bill and they'd see how it all shook out. So I don't know how final that is. I hope there's some money there, but he's, I'm told that insurance is void. So you do have options there. There's a whole philosophical debate about whether or not, do people pay for fire protection within their taxes or not? Should they be billed because they have a fire? It's like insurance. They've paid taxes over all the years and in the event they have a fire, now all of a sudden they have to pay for the event. But they've paid taxes to support fire services all these years. That's a bit of a philosophical debate you can have another day. But we do have options to bill it to the property if we want to do that.
Counselor B.
I think that the biggest issue that we're going to have as, as a town to deal with is that we've been pretty adamant with the county that they cover the costs when these kinds of things come up.
Exactly right. But I haven't done it yet.
The county's a little different situation because insurance companies, insurance companies won't pay as much as they do in town because the, by the time they get to the fire, it's just about toast.
I understand that, but what I, the principle is still the same. Insurance companies not covering it. So should the emergency services authority be the one that, authority be the one that is soaking it and the county would then have to pay for it? So either one way or the other, the town's going to have to pay for it or we're going to have to put a lien on that property, is what I'm getting at.
You know something? Let's allow administration to delve into this a little bit deeper for us and bring us at the next council meeting, a little bit of a recommendation.
And there's just one more addition to this, because I'm not off, not done yet. With the Raypro College fire, the bill there was $33,600 and the insurance company coverage will not be enough to pay the bill. So they're working with the adjuster and the insurance company. Just give me some information because this may be coming back, Counsel, again to figure out what we're going to do. And I think that's really important that we do have a policy in place to figure out where we're going with that. So I would suggest that, as you did, Mayor, that the administration look into this and we have to figure out where we're going to go with this in the future.
And here's a little bit more complicated because Raypro College is on federal land. So we need to try to, and it was a federal building. So we need to try to figure out where is our interface and our risk mitigation. That's an interesting one.
Well, yeah, it is.
But it's a reality we need to face and we might have to face it more than once because we, we do serve as a reserve also.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you very much and I'm really appreciative of you bringing those council and at the table.
Mayor, on that last point, and as administration looks into this, I'm sure they'll explore every option, but doesn't our reciprocal agreement kind of address that issue a little bit on things that call us that way, reimbursement of such services?
Actually, in this specific case, no. The mutual aid agreement omits specifically the agreement in place for fire services.
Really?
Yeah, so because there's already agreement in place to provide fire services, the mutual aid agreement specifically omits that out of there, so.
And do we know how much the insurance is willing to pay by the way?
No.
No, okay. All we know is.
Oh, it is not sufficient, but, but they're still discussing it with the, with the adjuster and the insurance company, so there's a chance that this may be brought up a little bit more.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. All those are very unfortunate issues, especially when they are awesome. All right, under 10, anybody has a question for administration regarding upcoming events or whatever? Nothing? Okay.
All right, excuse me, or. Jeff, I need to ask you, in the, in the case of an AGM, what is the timeframe to get out to your members before you have an AGM? Is it two weeks notice?
Here's my unhelpful answer, Counselor, as per the bylaws of that committee.
That's right. You have to look at your, your terms of reference. And within that term of reference, you should have that spelled out pretty clearly. If not, you need to make sure it is.
I would agree with that.
I would think in lack of bylaws, you'd want a couple of weeks. I think that'd be reasonable, but it's as per bylaws.
Yeah.
Well, and I think this goes back to what we've talked about before, is that maybe some of our service clubs in town would benefit from just a general governance training.
That's what we said.
And facilitate something like that.
We would be looking at when we had.
Essential checkpoints, so make sure you have the following. AGM.
Yeah, totally. Agreed. All right, let's go to 11, correspondence. So Counselor Balfour thinks those two irrigation districts are under your hat.
Are you driving up after that?
Well, I'm in county all day. So if they have to give us a notice the day before.
So is everybody.
So this one is a difficult one. So Levitt is tomorrow. And the Aetna, when is that?
Same day, same minute, do the same.
That's what I thought. I thought the red, last year I went for you and this year we do not have anybody that can go. Can you maybe as administration send us, send them our regrets? It's a conflict of scheduling, we can't do it. It's not that we don't want to, but we can't.
It's the same meeting, I think?
Yeah, it's all, it's all that one meeting.
They normally have it at the senior center. All right, 11C, Red Cross, as you can see, is an invitation to host a Big Bike. It looks very fascinating.
I've done it here before. It's been years ago, I was on it at one time.
So I don't know what.
Is this the commitment from the town?
It's not for us, but if you know people in town that would be interested to kind of have this type of event in town, you can let them know. They can put, what, 19 people on that bike or something?
29.
29.
Okay, 29.
We've had the Big Bike in town.
So if you have a group of 29 people interested in doing fundraiser, that is one for them. Okay?
Send it off to some of the service clubs and let them know.
Yeah, that could be something we could send to the service club in town. It's a good idea. Thank you.[1757.34]